Mr. Hook or not?
I did not hear from Mr. Hook, one way or the other. But we do, we do have a quorum, I believe.
Yes, we do. So I got, I got six thirty-five. So do we want to, you want to wait a little while for him, or you just want to charge on here?
I mean, I would prefer to start if we can't, if you guys want to do that.
Everybody ready to go? Okay, good. Okay, I call the July twenty-sixth meeting of the Sandy Planning Commission to order at six thirty-six P M. And call for a roll call.
Vice Chairman Carlton.
Here.
Commissioner Lasowski.
Here.
Commissioner McLean Wenzel is excused due to a family emergency. Chairman Crosby is excused due to a camping trip. He had been looking to go on all summer, I know. And who's up next on the dais? Commissioner Lee. And then Commissioner Hook, I have not heard from, he might join us later. And then Commissioner Maite.
President.
And then counsel is on Mr. Sheldon.
Evening here.
Okay, in our packet, you know, we do have the minutes from the May twenty-fourth meeting. So I will ask if anyone has any additions, corrections, comments? If, okay, well, I'll entertain that emotion.
I'll make the motion that we accept them Monday, May twenty-fourth meeting minutes as presented.
Oh, second.
Been moved and seconded, all those in favor, raise your thumb. Like everybody is saying yes, so we, we won that one four to zero. So Kelly, I'll call for your director's report.
Yeah, sorry.
Amounts and the positions that come with them.
My apologies, I'm trying to multitask here and I'm not doing a very good job yet, so.
It's okay, we got plenty of time here.
You're with me for one, I'm sorry. So as Commissioner Lee brought up at the beginning of the meeting before we officially started, she was asking about an LCDC presentation, and I just wanted to let you all know that LCDC, which is the Land Conservation Development Commission for the state of Oregon. So they're the ones that kind of oversee DLCD, the Department of Land Conservation Development. They asked Emily and I to present on behalf of the medium cities across Oregon on the House Bill two thousand and one changes. So there was twenty-two cities that were asked to adopt the House Bill two thousand and one changes. And I think nineteen have adopted them, including the city of Sandy. Two communities are going with the model code and one community, I think is kind of just choosing not to do anything, which means that the model code is in effect in their community. And so the city of Sandy, I presented on behalf of the city of Sandy. And I can send that link to everybody if they would like, it was a recorded meeting. And then the large city which was done the month prior was the city of Roseburg. And so it was their planning director that debriefed LCDC on that. And this is kind of like a primer, they kind of wanted to know lessons learned and different things that were challenging. And so I brought up that, you know, parking concerns are always challenging, especially in smaller rural towns like ours that have a lot of commuting density. And smaller lot sizes was a concern. And then just kind of understanding the difference between the discretionary items and the legislative requirements, which was kind of a hurdle for a few council meetings, I remember. So I kind of explained all that and then kind of lessons learned, I went into more of, you know, a lot of smaller towns want more. Oh, what do you call it? Blanket on the term right now, but home role authority. And that, you know, when the state comes with a lot of heavy-handed legislation like this, it's challenging for some of the smaller jurisdictions through the state. And, you know, they had a lot of questions that I tried to answer to the best of my ability, some were pretty tough. So I'll send that out after this meeting tonight and you guys can listen to the recording. It's about only, it's only about thirty-five minutes long. And I'll tell you where it's at in the meeting. And then if you have any questions, let me know. And then as far as the directory report for this month, I just kind of laid out what I believe is going to be the agenda items through October. We also have an apartment complex called the pad that we're doing a completeness check on that did not make it onto this list because it just came in last week. And so that very well could be heard in October instead of Sandy Woods. So we don't really know, we do know in August, there'll be three items which are listed in your packet. And in September, there'll be two items and then October is still a little bit up in the air. But we're definitely going to have a busy fall with a lot of development proposals coming in. And then I also included the recent decisions of note, obviously, there was a lot more smaller decisions, but I just tried to include the larger ones that you might be interested in. And then the new applications to note that we're now working on, which includes three subdivisions. And what I'll say on those is Deer Meadows subdivision, which was previously Bull Run Terrace. That's at the east end of Barco Road there. And that will be before you in September. That these, the applicant believes it's a type-two decision, but I bumped it to a type-three after the city manager asked me to do that. I think that was a good decision by Jordan as that was kind of a controversial site last time. So I think it's good just to get it right before a planning commission hearing. So you'll be hearing that in September. The Bornstead views, Emily could go into that more if you have questions about that, but that had a lot of issues, I would say. And so that's kind of being, we asked the applicant to kind of look at that more in depth and come up with a different proposal. And then that will likely be a planning commission hearing as well, and that's south of Cascadia Village subdivision. And then the last one there is Sandy Woods Phase Two. That's going to also be a planning commission decision because they're asking for some variances for block length and some other smaller things. However, I don't want to ever minimize the development proposal, but they're actually not proposing any traffic through any existing neighborhoods. The only access point would be out to Kelso Road. So while it still will be complex and still probably have its own, you know, complexities to it that make it, you know, a challenging review on some things. I don't think it's going to be like a huge controversial land use item. I could be proven wrong, but I just don't see it happening because there's, it's not like it's affecting a lot of existing residents. So those are kind of the bigger subdivisions coming up. And then, like I said, we also have an apartment complex called the pad and that's right by Monty Park. And that will probably be heard in either October or November. Although I haven't really looked at it fully, so it might be a type-two review. I just don't really know yet, but that would be something I would have included if we would have gotten it like a week earlier. So that kind of summary is my directory report unless anybody has any questions, I can fill those.
Go ahead, Jan.
Go ahead, Ron.
No, go ahead.
Okay, Kelly, what have we heard on any of the Luba cases? Are they just still pending?
You know what, I'm going to turn that over. I have not heard anything on either one of those potential Luba cases. I don't know if Mr. Guzman has, but I will turn that over to our attorney's office.
Yes, those are both still, I guess, what I would, what we call stayed. They are just sitting. And I think at this point, given the fact the city has now approved what was formerly called the views, right? I forget what it's called now. That one presumably should be going away. The Bull Run Terrace subdivision. Deer Meadows now, I expect that would stay until we resolve or at least get into the hearing on, on that subdivision. But there's been no action on them, so they're just kind of in abeyance.
I had two questions, one was answered through Jan's question. And then the other one's, Kelly, I read something about staffing, has there been any staffing changes within your department?
Yeah, that's a great question. Not yet. Well, let me rephrase that. So back in February, I believe it was February, David Snyder was moved out of our department, back to city administration. Although Mr. Snyder still does a lot of work with us, it's just not, he doesn't report to me anymore, he reports to Jordan. The only other staffing change that will be happening is Noreen Robinson, who's been our lead permit tech for the last fourteen, fifteen years. She'll be retiring on September third. And we are not filling that position. So because we're not filling that position, we're going to go to a four-day-a-week inspection schedule. And we're also going to have slightly longer turnaround times. Although for our building permit review. But what I will say is the positive thing is we hear from builders and developers who are probably the fastest in the metropolitan area right now for turnaround time. And so we certainly, from hearing from builders, we certainly won't be the slowest still, but it will add another week or two when you submit a building permit to our department.
Thank you.
So that, that's the two main staffing changes. That, on the positive side, Marisol Martinez, who was at twenty-five hours a week, has been increased to thirty hours a week. And Rebecca, who was at twenty-seven hours a week, she's also been increased to thirty hours a week. So there's some balancing going on with that, but yeah, until I figure out a better way to pay for additional staffing, we can't backfill that position. There's just not enough in the budget right now.
Okay, any other questions for Kelly? I guess it's in kind of in the same mode of this. And Rich, first of all, I'd like to thank you very much for attending. You know, given the, I don't know, fifteen, eighteen years I've been on the commission, this is the first time that I've actually, you know, we've had a council rep and, and, you know, actively want to participate with us and, and give us. So I want to thank you for that. First of all, don't take some of your time. Maybe me, I noticed one thing on the last council's agenda was starting in the process on the three sixty-second and Bell, which I would, I don't know how others saw that, but I thought it was pretty significant. Maybe you could just mention or just give a quick update on, on kind of how that went. And so everybody's kind of aware of what's happening just on that situation.
Yeah, the gist of it is it's moving forward. There's going to start sending the letters out to the property owners, there's a waiting period. And then the assessed value is going to go part of the, I want to use the word annexation because I'm not, I can't think of the word right now, but basically the acquiring of the property to start building the roadway and the utilities that are needed for future development. Did that answer your question, Don?
Yeah, I mean, I thought the staff report was very explanatory, you know, two pages, it's pretty simple, but it, there's legal process, David can probably share with it more than on that, you step chapter go through. And this is just one of the procedural, it's like first steps, it was the council declaring that there was a need. So though it indicated that in the staff report that it appeared all the current landowners appear to be, you know, enthusiastic to okay with the situation that it doesn't appear that condemnation would be needed. This is the kind of step you have to go through if you ever want to get there, if that's right, David. So basically, it was just nice to see that kind of move along.
Yeah, that's the, the, I think Commissioner Carlton really summarized it well. It's a, it's a necessary step if the city were to ever need to condemn property. I think though, that as I understand this project, albeit I really haven't been involved too closely, but that, that this is probably going to be one of those that the city's able to acquire the right of way without having to resort to any condemnation, which is, which is great.
Don, I did have one more if I can.
Go ahead.
Kelly, I see that tonight, you know, we're talking about the plan development changes to the code, which is great. And I was wondering, we talked about some of the action items for, for the prioritization of action items to work on. I've kind of where those stood, I'm not looking for an answer tonight. So I put in a plug in again for the, the tree, the tree development code language. But I'd love to see us get that by the end of the year or something on that. We, again, over the years, have just spent so much time on it. And I know we're not going to come up with something that's perfect, but I'm hopeful that that is something that will be addressed this year. So sorry for a little bit of politicking on it, but I just don't want to see that go by the wayside, as well as the other items you have, so.
Yeah, what I, what I can say to that is the, when the council and the commission, let me pull up my paper right here. When you guys set the priorities, the first one was PD, so that one's tonight. The next one, I believe, was the park code changes. Or that was one of the top four, and so that's coming before you next month. And then we have the municipal sign code and then the building code, which will also come, well, the building code won't come before you. I think I might bring the sign code before you, just for your thoughts on it. But those will also come in two thousand and twenty-one. The tree code and some Sandy-style stuff for the next two after that. So they'll probably come in the winter time at some point.
Okay, just again, just trying to keep it in everybody's friend of their mind because there's a committee that's working on that, that I know is for a variety of reasons has, it's been suspended. But again, I just hate to get started and try to get that revived again. So I'm just again, putting my two cents in work to try to get that pushed along as, as much as possible. So thank you.
I remember when being on the council that that committee had twenty-four people, which means they're not going to get anything done quickly.
Well, I would, I'll be opinionated, they're not getting anything done at all. I learned a long time ago when I was working for the Forest Service. And I got a lot of good projects done, but you know, there's a lot of studies done that basically committees that were more than seven people are basically dysfunctional. And so, you know, you have to have representation and stuff, but that's just a design for failure. So, you know, the key isn't the issue, it's just the design if I can solve the issue. So, and I've thought about it a lot too, Ron. I mean, there's lots of things that I just want to go into now, you know, et cetera, but, you know, that just need to be compromised on and move forward because it isn't going to be perfect, but we need to, we need to just move forward because we continue to run into it every time we have a subdivision, particularly in, on the fringes of the city where there may be more trees than others. All right, anything else before we jump into our first item? We've kind of tumbled into our, our item number six was just our own commissioner discussion. So if we're done with that, so we go ahead, Kelly, and jump into our, our first public hearing. Everybody ready to go?
Yeah, go right ahead.
All right. All right, so at six fifty-three P M, I'd like to open the public hearing on application twenty-one oh two oh hardship variance at three thirty-seven, three fifty-nine Olson Street hardship trailer. Are there any abstentions from the hearing body? Okay, any conflicts of interest? Any ex parte contact to, to declare? Okay, well, I noticed we have one attendee, so call for any challenges to members of the hearing body. For anybody who is attending via Zoom, if you do want to hit the raise hand button and you'll be recognized by Kelly or do star nine if you're on the phone. So hearing none? If you testify, you must raise all the issues you wish to address at this hearing. If the issue is not raised at this hearing, you may not be able to raise it later at an appeal. Your comments should state why the applicant should or should not be approved or include your proposed modifications you believe are necessary for approval according to the standards. If you do not raise specific issues at the first evidentiary hearing or at the close of the record, or fail to provide statements or evidence to allow the local government or its designate to respond to the issue, you will not be able to appeal this decision to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on this particular issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues related to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designate to respond to the issue precludes any action for damages in circuit court. I'll call for the staff report.
All right. Turn on the presentation here. This is a different format than I'm used to, but hopefully this works. Can, do you see the presentation or do you see like my screen as I see it?
I can see your lead screen.
You can see like all the tabs and everything?
Yeah, it's not in presentation mode, Emily.
How about that?
Still not.
Well, we can see it, we can see it if you just go through it, I think we're okay.
Yeah, I don't know, before, before I was on Zoom, there is an option to present it, but it seems like that option is no longer, this is like Google Docs or something, so. Anyway, as long as you can see it, should be fine. So tonight we're looking at a hardship permit. I believe we had one of these maybe three or four years ago, so we don't get them too often. But there is a process, there is a specific chapter in our code that pertains to this. So this one's located on the north side of Olson Street, just east of Jewelberry Avenue up in the north part of town. And the request is for a hardship permit, which is a type-three application. And we also processed a type-three special variance, which I'll get into in a little bit. So the hardship permit itself really has pretty basic review, review criteria. The main thing is that it must be necessary for the healthcare or maintenance of a person. And so the applicant has submitted a physician's letter that talks about this to fulfill that requirement. And then the second requirement is that it has to be connected to an approved water and sewer system or be completely self-contained for water and sewage. And we did not receive information from the applicant on this. And so included in the draft staff report, a condition that they would submit plans showing that one of these requirements is met. So as I mentioned before, as part of this review, we also included a special variance, and this is to the side yard, interior side yard setback. And that's because there's an existing RV pad behind that gate there you see on the left-hand side of the house. And that RV pad is already paved and in place. And because of that, the location of it, it's right up against the property line. So we believe it would be that the applicant is not going to be meeting that seven-and-a-half-foot interior yard setback. And to be perfectly honest, the code is not completely clear on this. The hardship permit section does require the applicant to submit a site plan with the setback shown, which implies that the setbacks apply to the trailer. But if it were a trailer that was not occupied, that was just parked, it wouldn't apply. So it's, it is a little bit confusing, but we thought the best path forward was to process a special variance with, along with this request to allow the RV to be parked closer than seven-and-a-half feet to the property line. And so the, you know, the review criteria for a special variance has to meet one of three. And we feel like it meets a, basically the intent and purpose of the regulations to be waived will not be violated. So as I mentioned before, if this were an RV just parked on somebody's property stored, you know, for use in the summer or whenever people use their RVs, it would be just parking on that pad anyway. The only difference in this case is that there will be a person living in it. So that kind of changes things, but it wouldn't really affect, you know, the overall intent and purpose of the code. So the recommendation is to approve the type-three hardship permit and the special variance with the conditions that are outlined in the draft staff report. And I'm hoping that the applicant is here tonight. I know there's one extra panelist, I'm hoping that's the applicant to speak a little bit more about the, the type of RV and hopefully has pictures because we did not receive any. The only information we had is, I believe, the length is twenty-four feet. But it didn't include the width or, you know, what kind of model or what it looks like. So I'm hoping that they're here tonight. But that concludes the staff.
So that, that's, that's your report at this time, right?
Yes.
Okay. So what is the status of the applicant presentation? Do we have an applicant, Emily, to, to present that who's on the attendee?
I'm hoping, but I don't know.
Yeah, we, well, the app, what we have is this, Darian is on the attendees, but I don't see a hand raised. So if, if the applicant is attending either by phone or by, by Zoom, if they could either raise their hand on Zoom or do a star nine and then Kelly will, will know that you're here to present.
Yeah, we, we reached out to the applicant, but we never heard anything back on attendance, so. There's no, there's no requirement to attend, although we always highly recommend it.
Yeah, since there's some questions, that might be a little, little problematic, we'll see how it goes. Okay, well, without an applicant's presentation, we'll just go ahead and move to public testimony. If you do testify, we ask that you, you know, if you do kind of avoid repetition, you know, if you have a comment and somebody else has already made that comment, it's okay to refer to that person. If you have any documents, maps or letters that you want us to consider, you need to make those available to the city by sending them to planning at ci.sandy.or.us. Since it doesn't appear we have a lot of folks, I'm going to suggest we don't do what we've kind of done. We usually just have testify in favor and not in favor and those who don't know. But when we don't have very many people, we might just see if anybody wants to say anything and we'll go from there. So if you want to testify and if you're on Zoom, please raise your hand. And or if you're on the phone, please do star nine. And Kelly, let us know if anybody wants to testify.
I mean, I can allow this there in person to speak, and if they don't want to talk about it, they don't have to, but they're not raising their hands, I don't, I don't know who they are.
Right.
Up to you guys.
I would just say, you know, if he wants to raise his hand, that's fine. If not, it looks like Commissioner Hook might be joining Kelly. So without any public testimony appearing to be there, I'll go ahead and go back to Emily for staff recap.
Um, I don't really have much to add. I think it's just a matter of whether you want to permit a hardship trailer in this location and then whether you want to permit them to be a little closer to the property line than the code would require.
Okay, do. I guess I'll just leave the, we'll wait till we go ahead and have our discussion. I guess there's some questions there that you brought up. And there's no answers, like what the trailer looks like, you know, et cetera. But I'll let that go. So of course, we don't have any rebuttal because we don't have anybody talking. So we'll leave the public hearing open for the moment, just in case somebody happens to, to pop up. Before we kind of proceed, I'd like to go ahead and confirm that Commissioner Hook has joined the meeting. If you can, just unmute yourself and let us know.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Okay, you can note Commissioner Hook joined it, looked like about seven oh five or whatever time you came up with there, Kelly. So let's, I guess, to open it up to discussion.
Chair. Can I, can I just ask a clarifying question?
Sure, go ahead.
I used to own a home across the street from this location, so I'm very familiar with the property. Um, I used to own a home across the street from this location, so I'm, I'm very familiar with the property there. Is the proposal to put an RV in the RV pad that's there and just have somebody living in that RV temporarily?
Yeah, so the way the hardship permit works is it, it, you know, it has to be tied to a doctor's note and um, let me check the code real quickly. It's, it's limited to a certain uh, amount of time before they would have to do a renewal.
That's two years.
Yeah.
Yeah, when I was looking at the schematics, it just looked like they had placed an RV on that pad, which is, it's an RV parking pad, which is what it was meant for. I just wanted to make sure I was seeing the same thing. It's just going to be a permanent place.
Yeah, so right, they could, like I was saying before, yeah, they, they could park an RV on that parking pad. Um, but they are requesting a hardship permit to allow somebody to live in that RV. Um, and yeah, Dawn is correct. It would be a twenty-four year period, and then I think there is um, a renewal option after that. But it would, it would be dependent on the doctor's note and all of that as well.
And then does the renewal for it come back through the commission meeting, or is it just an administrative process?
Looks like the renewal would be a type two procedure. So um, it says a renewal application must be accompanied by an updated written statement from a physician that the need for healthcare or maintenance still exists. So um uh, a type two procedure would not come back to plan and commission, but there would be a requirement for an updated um, doctor's letter.
Okay, and it's a twenty-four month window?
The initial, the initial approval is uh, for a period not of not more than twenty-four months. Or until the termination of the condition of hardship or emergency for which the permit was issued, whichever occurs first. That's how it's written.
And my last question.
There is no longer hardships, then it would, it would terminate that hardship permit.
When I read the application, I saw the applicant had written um, the word temporary in there a couple of times. Is there an estimated time, timeframe that they are planning to do this, or are they looking for the full twenty-four month?
Um, I don't know that.
I saw the reason why they wanted it. I just didn't know if it was a temporary living condition space for them or something that they had intended on. Uh, you know, something more permanent.
Uh, just so you know, Commissioner, three or four that I have processed in my tenure with the City of Sandy, we never um, not saying it's not a bad idea, but we've never gotten to that level of specificity. So we've always just asked for the doctor note, and then the doctor says that no, they need the hardship trailer, and then we ju, we assume it's for a two-year period, but I don't think we've ever really asked people on that. It wouldn't be a bad idea going forward though.
Well, just because it said up to, I thought if it was up to and they only needed it for nine months, why put it on for two years? Why not just cap it at a year? But I didn't know if there was a timeframe specified or not. Thank you.
Well, the, the code, you know, whatever they're asking for, the code simply says that this, that the approval would go for two years. And within ninety days of the expiration, they have to apply for a renewal. And that's what Emily said. So, and I think the way I kind of view it is um, obviously what it basically boils down to is for somebody to, to be living in a trailer as opposed to just parking a trailer. You have to show that there's this hardship need um for that. So anybody else want to uh, discuss the situation? Yeah, you're muted, Ron.
Thank you, Don. I looked at the drawing that was submitted, and it looks like it's approximately a little over eight feet wide. If it's to scale eight by twenty-four, somebody had asked about the width. And I had one um, one of my neighbors saying that hardship in it. It could be, it's different than the City of Sandy, but if the hardship were to cease, the person move, whatever, then that would, then the ninety days would kick in to re, remove that or cut services to whatever. It would have to be just a parking pad again, not a living space. So that's my understanding, up to two years.
Yeah, I, I noticed it too. I guess the lane piece. I looked at it, scratched my head. Most maps tend to have a north arrow. So I, I, I think I know which way it basically goes, but it seemed to me to, to be at ninety degrees where it was basically at. So um, anybody thoughts, any more thoughts from folks?
This is Steven. I have a question. Um, so there's the two-year period, but then it says, or if the need no longer exists. What is the process for if someone is, a, a citizen is curious if that need still exists? How is that handled? With it, if, within that two-year period?
I think I will defer to Kelly on this one. I'm not sure. We haven't, I, I mean, I imagine if somebody complains or requests us to look into it, we would probably have to contact them. Um, I don't believe that's happened, so I don't know.
Yeah, the, the only way you'd be able to determine that is rely on the doctor or, or a, another doctor to basically say if the need is still there. I wouldn't feel comfortable as a staff member to determine whether the hardships exist, and I don't think that would really be our place anyway. So if we got like a lot of complaints like related to that, they don't think it's needed anymore, we would have to look into it, but we would just rely on the doctor or another doctor.
Is there a process whereby they terminate that or someone checks it at twenty-four months? And the reason I ask, I used to live out in um, county area and had property in Harbor with acreage, and when I bought it, someone had a hardship trailer on there, and it was really a nightmare trying to get off there and deal with the county. Finally, they had to just destroy it.
Yeah, I mean, I can speak to that as well. We honestly, how we've done these in the past, the four that I've done since I've worked here in ten years, is we'll just put like a, a Google reminder on all of our calendars. And um, we don't just place it on one person's calendar in case that person leaves the city. So it'll be on like six or eight calendars, Google calendars, and then at the end of that, we check in with the person, determine if they need to do a renewal, and if not, then we'll send him a letter saying that it needs to be removed within X amount of time, and we'll go down the code enforcement path. So we, we won't get like um, aggressive right out of the gates, but we will hold them to the requirement. If you guys decide to allow it tonight, we will hold them to those dates.
If we do, uh, you know, Kelly approved it, it appears, well, a couple of things um, in the in your uh, conditions of approval right off the bat, you, you're basically indicating that you need more information before you can really do it, as you really don't know the distance for the rear setback. And you know, based on the diagram, and the diagram, I don't know of scale, but I mean, if they're trying to show these at one, one foot, it only shows five foot, then the diagram stops. I, I don't know if there's more yard there or not. So um if we prove it, I assume that it would be based upon the fact you folks would be um verifying that because the, you, the one um, special variance is for the side, not for the back, correct? So if for some reason, if for some reason you find that the back is not twenty feet, do they have to come back to us again for another special variance for the back? It seems like the, the, it's kind of almost the application's incomplete. That makes sense? Not on a formal basis, but from a knowledge standpoint.
Yeah, that's the hard thing with um, applications that are submitted by homeowners, is there not, as you well know, Commissioner Carlton, they're not typically to the same level of what you would see from like a developer or somebody that does it on a professional basis. So there usually is missing information. We ask for more, but it's usually still incomplete, even when we bring it before you. That's why we are hoping they were going to be here tonight. We reached out to them by email a few times and phone call.
Um, I, I, you, I just offer, I'm sorry, go ahead, Kelly.
I was going to say you could put a condition in uh, depending on the rear yard and state what, what you would allow the rear yard at. So you could just say it would have to meet the zoning code specifications for that lot, or you could come up with another um, distance.
The other thing I was going to say too, um, along those lines, I was thinking just condition it to say it's got to comply with the code. That's the standard, you know, in the absence of a variance request. Um, the other thing, you know, um, given the fact the applicant's not here, the commission could always say uh, we want to get more information on that piece and, and we would, you know, continue it uh, to allow the applicant to provide that information. They get that option, and whether they do or not is up to them. Um, you know, that would be another way you could, you'd go about it as well. I don't know if, you know, that would um actually bear fruit, but it, you know, that's another option anyway. Chair, I can, I can tell you just some of my setup. I used to live across the street. My buddies lived in that house before. I've walked that driveway. I've walked that RV line. It ends at the end of the house, and then there's another ten to fifteen feet of yard uh, beyond it. So it's not all the way back to step back there. Just, just so you know, there's quite a bit, a distance between the end of the RV pad and the back of the property line. The backyard's probably at minimum ten feet, probably fifteen feet uh, past the RV that's shown there on the map. I just don't think the map is to scale.
Yeah, they tried to make it to scale, but like I say, there's no north arrow, and so I think the garage entrance appears to be on the left side. Based upon the, on the orientation. Um, I looked at the map just um, you know, through Google Maps or Portland Maps, just to kind of get an idea of scale also. So I guess it would be um, I, I guess the comment was good, which was, you know, could approve it assuming that they're meeting all other port, all other parts of the code, which would be the twenty feet. And if they only determines that they're not, then I guess they just have to come back to us. So any, any more discussion that folks would like to, like to have? Would anyone like to go ahead and, let's go ahead and close the public hearing? I'll make the motion. We close the public hearing. Have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor, give us a thumbs up. Ron, you're in favor, okay? So we close the public hearing. Does anyone want to uh, procedurally, Kelly, do uh, since you have uh, two variances here, do we need two motions? Can we meld them into one? How do you want to do it, or David?
Yeah, I would, I mean, if you're, if you're going to approve it with uh, approval of the variances, I would just make it all into one motion would be my preference.
Okay, David's okay with that?
But Chair, I'll make a motion to recommend approval of twenty-one dash zero two zero hardship variance for three, seven, three, five, nine Olson Street.
Um, does that um, in, I guess that assumes that they all are submitting all of their code. So that I want, I just want to make sure we got that back, that back setback covered in some way. Is there a?
Before we have a second, can I ask another procedural question? Since I was late to the meeting, do I need to abstain? Um, or am I good to, to continue to vote on this?
Um, Commissioner Hook, did you get a chance to just sort of look through the material before you came tonight?
Yes.
Great. Uh, if you feel you've, you know, got the information that you need to go forward, even though you weren't here for the whole hearing, it's fine if you continue.
Okay, looking for a second?
I'll second uh, Commissioner Mayton's.
Okay, they moved and seconded. Call for roll call vote.
So you, the motion included the approval of the special variance request to the side yard, correct? Okay.
Yeah, for both the side yard and then the special variance. Yeah, the best branch for the side yard and then the, the hardship also.
Okay, I just wanted to, I was just right in the minutes. I wanted to clarify. Okay, um the, how, Commissioner uh, Lasowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Hook?
Yes.
Commissioner Maiten?
Yes.
And Vice Chairman Carlton?
Yes. Okay. Since we only been there to forty-five minutes, it's okay to go ahead and go. Everybody ready to want the next one? Okay, our next um, our next public hearing is actually legislative. Um, and I think this will um, take us back to a lot of discussions that we've had in the past that um, was spawned by the the uh, the View subdivision. And uh, you may recall the joint meeting we had with the city council to where we um, discussed, you know, you know, priorities and, and uh, and particularly on this particular code section, uh, with the preference of the um, of the, of the council and the commission, you know, in terms of either repealing or um, adjusting, if you like, or changing the words. And uh, take us kind of back to that meeting with the city council. I believe the, the general opinion was that uh, they looked at repealing it, basically. So that's what the purpose of our, our next uh, item is, is start that process. So you know, we have a public hearing. Um, again, we're recommending the city council on this one. Um, you know, it's not basically um, our decision. So I'll open up this public hearing at seven twenty-two. Call for any abstentions from the hearing body. Call for any conflict of interest. And this particular case, we quickly now just go to the staff report. I got the right one, didn't I, David?
Um, no, no uh, PowerPoint for this one. Um, as Dawn has already mentioned, um, this was more initiated by Planning Commission and City Council at that June seventh joint meeting. Um, so this is just staff bringing that to you based on your um, recommendation back then or, or, or the, you know, your decision back then. Um, so the, the purpose would be to repeal the entirety of chapter seventeen sixty-four, which is the plan development uh, chapter. And then along with that, there's I think roughly thirteen uh, sections in the, or chapters in the development code, and then also um, title thirteen that have references to plan developments. And so there's some edits to those chapters as well, just to remove those references to plan developments. Um, and that's pretty much the entirety of it. We went through the noticing process, um, noticed DLCD, sent a measure fifty-six notice to the applicable property owners, and then posted the legal in the paper, which is sort of just the um, what needs to be done in terms, in terms of noticing. And then um, assuming that you, you as the planning commission um, are still wanting to proceed with repealing that chapter, then our recommendation would be to uh, recommend continuing, continuing on um, to city council with that, that uh, repeal. But really ultimately, it's, it's up to you guys. This is all initiated from you, so.
And I will, I will add one small thing is that when it goes before the city council, we'll also be doing a resolution to amend the fee schedule to remove planned developments from the fee schedule as well. So that's something that wasn't presented tonight, but that would be presented to the city council.
Okay, so the, the order has us moving to, to public testimony. So again, at this point, it appears we have Darian hanging in there on the, on the Zoom. Um, I'm not sure what uh, you know, might be, uh, we do have uh, might, might be on a, on the phone. So I will go through the, I will go through the, the, the guidelines. So if you do raise any issues, please um, consider not repeating anything somebody else has basically said. If you have any maps or letters or, or documents that you'd like to provide to the city, be sure you email those materials to planning@ci.sandy.or.us. Again, we, we normally Again, we we normally do testimony in three groups, those in favor, those not in favor and those that are not sure. Given the small group that we appear we have in attendance, I'm not going to worry about that. So any if anybody would like to testify. On this topic, please raise your hand if you're on Zoom or do star nine if you're on the phone.
This is a very typical midsummer meeting, not a lot of.
Staff all the controversial things in the middle of the summer and meetings are shorter, right?
I don't see any hands raised, Vice Chairman.
Okay, it's either that or as we all know, at least within the council and the commission, we beat this one to death. I mean, we we had many hearings and so we have done that. So. If that's the case, I will go ahead and go to Emily for staff recap, just to make sure I'm going through the order here.
I don't really have anything to add.
A lady of few words. Okay, we'll go ahead and leave the public meeting open, I guess, just in case somebody happens to pop in. So I guess the open it up for. Discussion.
I have none, Chair.
I guess why I I just I just like to say a couple of things on it because one of the, when this one came up originally. And this has been, you know, when that was originally proposed, you know, I I spent a bunch of time being a retired, had some time. You know, reading this and scratching my head and just trying to figure out this whole thing. I talked to Kelly and. You know, the his his understanding was is this was put in the code maybe back around nineteen ninety four. But nobody knows because nobody was here, so Kelly, if that's right. These did appears who showed up the last time, maybe we did the last. Comp plan, which we know is under revision. Yeah. So with no history, you know, David, you know, legislative history, you know, what? Everybody is home for interpretation. And so I tried to make sense of it personally, and I think I've shared this with some, you know, the only way I could make any sense of it. Was to insert a couple of words and that would be that it didn't apply to all zones. It applied to all zones in the village designation. And the only reason I say that is, you know, the first two. Intents talked about village, it kind of made sense to me. If you think about how villages were originally conceived back in the comp plan. You know, they were to be areas where we had, you know, multi zoning, you know, you had apartments, you had same thing residential, a little commercial. But you know, that was like a big block that was put there. Well, when you start, people start coming with ideas. You know, and putting things on the ground, they may not work out. So it sounded to me like a part that might be have written. So you could shift the zones around. You know, in a village. I mean, that kind of made sense to me as a as a vehicle, but not to do that. Anywhere in the town, because if you, because I know the district legal definition, and I don't know what that means, David, but then if you then take it to that end, it's like. Well, that means all of our code doesn't mean anything because you can just do anything you want anywhere, right? So, you know, it's like these two different extremes. So it just seemed to me like when it was drafted, they missed about two or three words. At the very beginning, and if they would have put them in, it would have made, it would have made sense. And in fact. You know, it may may have had some value. So, you know, at the end of the day, I mean, that's the only thing I try, I mean, I'm a logical person. I tried to make sense of it. But you know, it is that it is as we have it now and the way it's currently written, it's it was problematic as we all know. We all went through all of the public hearings on the views and city council did the same. And we understand this where it's at. So anyway, that was just kind of my my thought. I can't prove or disprove my theory, but at least I was trying to. Figure out what what might have been going through somebody's mind, Kelly, you know, twenty years ago, thirty years ago, how many years ago?
I know it was in the code in nineteen ninety seven when the conflict was adopted, but I. I don't think I did enough legislative research to look beyond that. So it might have existed prior to that. It's it's possible. Anyway, I would say that the, just for what it's worth, that. Predated my time as well, it was the beginning of my law school experience when that occurred. But my read of it is 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 consistent with with how Dawn looks at it. I think when that happened, the twenty forty plan for the city. It was a rather, like a lot of these happen with a with a grant from the state. With DLCD funding and I think this concept at the time was sort of. From a from a planning perspective, thought of as a really interesting way to go about it, where you'd have in the in the in the comp plan. This ability to create these villages because the comp plan has a lot of language about villages. And within a village, if there was a designation that the city made, a comp plan designation. Then something like a planned development or a planned unit development would be one option. I think that's I think that's absolutely right. The idea with that would be that you'd have these villages that you could do a lot of on the ground. Sort of shifting of zone boundaries and lot sizes, you you could allow for a lot of creativity. Maybe that's the charitable sort of view of of what was intended anyway. For better or worse, you've you've, as far as I know, you've you've basically got one village in town and that goes back quite a ways, the Bornsted Village. So that that if that is an accurate description of the intent, the intent didn't really pan out that well. And as Dawn said, the the code is a little bit confusing. The 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 chapter on planned development because it says it applies to all zones. It doesn't say it only applies in villages, but. That's certainly, I think, a very fair. You know, read of what was intended, but you know, we don't know, none of us were here. So. It is, it is rather confusing. I will say, you know, broadly speaking, and this is going to be up to. You know, you as planning commissioners and and city council members. The idea of planned unit developments is hardly that unique. That's something that a lot of our clients have. Not tied to a village per se, the village concept is pretty unique to Sandy, to be honest, but. The idea that if you get, usually it's in a in the in the realm of 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 properties that are that have a lot of constraints, physical constraints. Most typically kind of, you know, things that have a lot of contour changes. Bottom line is that you can take, you know. Areas that you really can't practically develop and, you know, do something on those areas that you can. But it always remains something that's discretionary for the city. You can say, yes, we'll entertain that idea. No, we won't. And, you know, it remains an option. So, you know, in the future, maybe this is something that the city would look at again, you know, it's really a policy call, not a legal one. So, you know, I understand the sort of questions and kind of frustration that come with this because it's, it doesn't tie back very well to. What I think the intent was, which was, we're going to have these villages all throughout the city. And and back in ninety seven, that was the idea and obviously that didn't pan out.
Well, we have, you're right. We have a lot of areas around the city that are village designations. I think there's like five or something. The only one that that actively I think I developed with Bornsted or whatever. I mean, for example, you know, we did look at Bull Run Terrace on the south side. Twenty six, you know, that was going to connect twenty six through, that actually is in a village designation if you look at the comp plan. I mean, they they could have done a planned development. Now, on the other hand, you go on the other side of the highway to the views. They're not in the village. That's where the line was is, you know, so, you know, we do have these areas. So I guess you're right. This is outside the scope we're talking about tonight, but in the revision of the comp plan, the whole issue of should the city or not continue the village concept? I think it'll probably be a a topic, you know, high level topic that to start with and just kind of go from there. I know Ron has some very good insight on that because of the mainly the commercial part. You know, that they have, you know, we've thrown commercial into all of those, which you can do. But next question is, is what commercial can be successful? Then you're good to just put out five acres and then say, come in here and build some nice fancy thing will be successful. It's not that simple. And I know he has some pretty good insight into that. So. So anyway, comes, you know, comments from other commissioners before we go to a a vote.
This is Steven. Did we have any updates to the map for like any overlays? I can't remember.
Which map, Stephen, the comp plan map?
Thank you for, are you talking about, is he talking about the zoning map?
Yeah, I'm not sure, Stephen, if you can hear us, it appears at least your video is frozen. So I'm I think we may have lost him. He may log in again.
Yeah, just just to clarify, I think this is what he might have been asking, but. Possibly not, but these changes wouldn't make any modification to the existing plan developments. I think we have six or seven of them in city limits. Those are already established and the PD designation will remain on those properties, but. If that's what he was asking, then that's the answer to that.
Okay. So let me take a second. I'm sure he's trying to log back in. I guess it's up to you folks. I do notice we have one more person is is joined. As an attendee, if we want, you know, we are still open in case someone does want to testify. So Kelly, you know, I was thinking going ahead. Given that person an opportunity, at least just mentioning it. Is that okay?
Sure meeting, so yeah.
Yeah. We are, for those who are attending the meeting either by Zoom or phone, we still are are open. So if you do want to testify on this topic, please raise your hand on Zoom or. Who star nine, if you are on the phone, just wait a quick second, just to make sure everybody has a chance that may have joined.
I do not see any.
Okay. Well, Stephen hasn't joined yet, back yet, looks like. Anyone else want to, Chris, Ron? Dan, any other, any other thoughts?
No, I think you said at the beginning, we've pretty well hashed this over already and now it's. Seems like it's more of the technical steps of moving it forward. So I would move that we close the public hearing.
Okay, motion. Chris, was that you?
I seconded, yes.
Okay, Ron moved, Chris seconded to close the public hearing. All those in favor, give us a thumbs up. We have and Stephen just joining. You back with us, Stephen?
I'm back, sorry about that.
Boy, you gotta pay your internet bill, you know, or they just knock you off, you know, we're remote, we're, so you're voting yes to close the public hearing. That's where we are. Okay, good. All right, I will entertain a motion to get this on to city council for someone who would like to do that.
Don, I like the motion to forward a recommendation to the city council to remove. All verbiage of planned development in the development code as outlined by the planning department in the related documents.
Second.
And moved by Ron, seconded by Jan. All those in favor? Put your thumbs up. Those opposed? Appears we're we're five oh. So that takes care of that. We'll put it back to Rich and and the council. Any idea, Kelly, when they're going to be, you know, council might be seeing that, when I get back on their agenda?
Yeah, we're moving swiftly on this one. So it will be on their agenda, I believe, on August sixteenth. So in three weeks.
Okay.
Their next meeting, actually.
Okay. All right, well, we've made it to the end. Any comments or thoughts from from folks?
Good job, Don.
I was gonna say you moved an expeditious meeting there, Chair.
Well, you give it, well, to say, this was it, even though the last topic is probably highly controversial. I think we've put it through the haybinder and we've kicked it out the back end and put it in bales and it's been in the barn for a while. So we probably didn't need to go over it, but once that tree code comes up. We'll see what happens. I have my picture of Victoria Falls behind us. I will not be at the next meeting. That's the plan. A week from tomorrow, wife and I are on a plane headed for Africa for forty days. And forty ninth, actually forty five to be precise, but we'll be back on the thirteenth. So. We're and then we're in the final throes of beating the COVID protocols to death in in six different countries. Including the United States. You know, I can tell you right now, you know, if you want to travel or nationally, you know, it it's just a struggle, but if you want to do it bad enough, you can make it work. You got to take your, you know, COVID tests to go into and out of any every country. Vaccination doesn't mean anything. I mean, it's either, you know, you got to take the test or not, and we have to take five COVID tests along the way. Before we enter any of the, any of the countries. So we plan to be safe and. Plan to get this trip basically done. So I'll look forward to talking to folks at the prior to, or at least at the. The September meeting is the plan. So. Anyway. I will entertain a motion to close the the meeting. Want to adjourn? Somebody want to make the motion? Oh, Stephen, I guess made the motion, Chris seconded. All those in favor, raise your hand, say aye. Okay, great. Rich, again, hey, thanks for joining. I really, really appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you guys and thank you for everything this summer. Have a good trip, Don.
You bet. All right, see you guys later.
Nice night, everybody.